Hello, I'm Jay Jermaine Bay. I'm the Chief Cozy of a Lodi and Moore's Parade in Monte, Colorado. The acronym is AMPAC. I am the judge of a constable court. So today, we're going to continue with the same subject matter. And what's the subject matter? How the Moors lose the land, and how do we get it back? I.e., how the Moors lose the E-State? And how do we get the E-State back? And how do we get it back? With a pick. The Matriarchal Council has now create legislation, create a constitution, and that constitution creates a state. And that state brings its Moors nationals back into a birth of a nation. So today, we'll continuously go along the same subject matter. So keep in mind, today is Class 11. Class 11. So what did we learn in Class 10? We learned quite a bit. We learned about status, state, and state of facts. What did we learn about the word "status" as it relates to Black's Law Dictionary? We learned that the word "status" is synonymous to the word "state." Standing, which means what? State of condition. So the Moors said they need to stand on their square. What are they trying to say? What they should be saying is, what's the status of standing on the square of their constitution? The constitution is a document, a political document. You have to stand on the square of your political document, right? That's called the constitution. And the constitution creates a state. And the state of affairs creates the condition for your Moors nationals, right? So what have we been talking about lately? The three classifications that the ICJ was able to determine about Moors. And what was that? That Moors have three classifications. That's if-so juror Moore subjects, Moors proteges, and Moors nationals. If you're not a Moors national, you cannot enforce treaties. So therefore, you're still considered an if-so juror Moore subject or protege, which means you don't have protections of international law, much less protections of your own state. So without state, you cannot have protections. So in the definition of state, what did we learn? We learned that state was described in Black's Law Dictionary in a verb. And now, who's the verb? The verb represents what? The action of scribing the constitution so you can stand on that square of the constitution, that document. That document is a circle, okay? That document is a circle, makes a 360-degree circle. So understand that what are we talking about today? We have to continuously understand, we're talking status now. As we start to understand international law, international law, the ICJ is looking at the Moors of North America. They're looking at what? Their status. What about their status? Do they have a state? If they don't have a state, then they're stateless people with a nationality. And until they ratify a state, they're still stateless people with a nationality. So today, we're going to continuously keep studying, what do we need to do in order to get our E-State back? As Moors nationals, and not Moors subjects, not Moors proteges, but Moors nationals. Keep in mind, a constitution, constitution is a birth of a nation, a political birth of a nation. Because the Moors consanguine already says we're a nation. However, we must be an organized nation based upon international law. What does international law say? What's the reference point? How do we qualify? 1969, Vienna Convention, which is a treaty. And what a treaty? Supreme Law of the Land. It says what? You must have a state if you want to enforce treaties. So we're going under international law, okay? So today, we'll continue learning more about what do the Moors need to do to create their estate? What do we need? Constitution. Through that constitution, the Matriarchal Council, right? The MHR Council scribes the constitution, puts together the seal and the flag. Which flag? Your provincial flag. Keep in mind, the provincial flag is a state flag of the E-State. The Moroccan flag is the flag of the empire. What's the empire? The world. Africa has 54 states. All those states are part and parcel of this E-State flag. That represents the Moors empire that built civilization all around the world. Europe has 50 flags. There are 50 provincial state flags is part and parcel of this E-State flag. All 50 of their states are part and parcel of this E-State flag. The country of America has 35 states, 35 provincial states. All 35 of those provincial states are part and parcel of this E-State flag. China has 45 states. All of their 45 states are part and parcel of this E-State flag. Okay, so my question to the Moors is this. Where is our state flag? The Moors say, well, we got the mother flag. That's the E-State flag. According to international law, you must have a state. What does that mean? You have to carve out your own latitude, longitude of your own state. That's law. Moors want to talk law, which means you want to talk contract? You must talk international law. You need a provincial government. So today, we're talking about government. Keep in mind, the prophet Nobudjou Ali said what? He gonna lead the Europeans here long enough to teach us government. Have the Moors been learning government? There's a high probability the answer is no. I can qualify that. I'll do that today. I'll give reference points, okay? So let's start talking about today, today being Class of 11. Let's talk reference point, let's qualify, let's continue to learn, how do we put together a government? Well, let's learn what the Europeans already did. Who did they learn it from? Who did the colonists learn government from? We'll learn about that today, okay? So what are we going to do today? We're going to learn about the Treaty of Peace and Friendship of the year 1786, 1787. Keep in mind, the Moroccan courts signed the treaty first. That claims the jurisdiction of the Moroccan courts, which is your constable court. The jurisdiction is Morocco. And then the colonists fully ratified the treaty in 1787 through their Congress, okay? So some people relate to it 1786, some people relate to it 1787, all right? Fully ratified 1787. So we're talking about that today, the treaty. What else will we talk about today? Just to give you a quick brief, we're talking about George Washington. George Washington gives you an insight on what happened during the time when these treaties, when the treaties were ratified, all right? So we'll qualify some things that's happening, dates and deadlines, okay? All right, so first things first. Let's take a look at the treaty. Now, keep in mind, what you see up here right now, these are my mind notes I've made, revisions, edits, to give myself reminders. Keep in mind, it's a study class, so you have to go back and put in words and say, okay, this is how people can study a law. It's like a study version, all right? So today, we'll go over the Treaty of Peace and Friendship, okay? So the treaty, we're starting off the treaty, the actual text of the treaty. But before we get into that, there's something I want to point out to you. Something very specific based upon dates, timelines. Why am I bringing this up? We're talking constitution. Keep that in mind, or you can't have a state unless you have a constitution. You can't have a constitution unless you have a nationality. So we're going to put these in proper sequential order today, all right? So watch this. Treaty of Peace and Friendship, June 23rd, 1786, in the jurisdiction courts of Morocco and ratified by the United States of America on July 18th, 1787. So what am I doing here? I'm laying out dates. So what happened? The colonists went over to Cedi Mohammed, who was the Sultan at that time, whose real name was Abdullah Ibn Mohammed III. Going under the name of Cedi Mohammed, Sultan of the Empire. What's the empire? The world. So based upon my side note, what do I have here? Just pay attention. The colonists that are chiefly British. Why do I keep calling them chiefly British? Well, I can give you various reference points, but watch this. If you go to Black's Law Dictionary, it's just one reference point. I'm going to qualify just one reference point. Watch this. If the mothers can go to Black's Law Dictionary, Fourth Edition, what I want you to do is go to what they call the APP tab of Black's Law Dictionary, which is the page right after the last letter of Z. So the last letter of Z is 1798 in Black's Law Dictionary. So you go to what the tab calls APP. Now, I'll put it up on the screen for those at home can read it, as well as the mothers. So when the mothers find it, this is what they're going to see. It's called a Table of British Reginal Years. A table of British reginal years. But what does that mean? This is the Black's Law Dictionary. My edition is 1951. So why is it 1951? When you turn the book over, under what they call the APP tab, it says immediately what you see up on the screen. So if the mothers could read the title, I'd appreciate it.
A Table of British Original Years.
Exactly. So that's the title. Wait a minute. I thought it was the United States of America. Wait a minute, I thought it was the United States. Well, why is the United States of America not to be confused with the United States corporations? Have the word "British" in their Black's Law Dictionary? You know why? Because the colonists are still using parliamentary legalities in order to enforce said laws on Moors. It's an extension of Great Britain over to North America claiming a monarchy, a commonwealth jurisdiction, which is called a territorial jurisdiction, subject matter jurisdiction, and persona jurisdiction over the land of Morocco. But it's a false jurisdiction. It's only to have a jurisdiction over citizens of the United States of America. It was never intended for Moors. So when you hear me call them chiefly British, even in their own law dictionary, they use the word "British." Wait a minute. In the beginning of the book, Black's Law Dictionary, in what they call the preface, the preface. Soon you open up the book, you get into what they call the preamble preface of the book, okay? The preface. Soon as you open up the book, the preface, all right? So what happens on the screen is the preface of the book. All right, so if I can have one of the mothers read the preface revised, Fourth Edition, we're going to read a couple of paragraphs. Somebody have one of the mothers read it?
The sustained and growing popularity of Black's Law Dictionary, since its appearance more than 75 years ago, is a striking tribute to the scholarship and learning of Henry Campbell Black and to the essential soundness of the plan adopted by him for the compilation of a legal lexicon.
So right there, it's telling you it's legal. It ain't law. It's legal. Wait a minute. I thought the title said law. Oh, but it's just a title. What's the title about? Blacks. Signs and symbols. Who else? What's the color of the skin? Brown. It's about what? The legality to usurp who? Black and brown persons are illegal. Because people aren't crayons. So right in the preface, it tells you, this is for legal. Legal what? Legally invalid feudal law. Signs and symbols. Listen, we're talking British law, right? Watch this. Let's read the second paragraph, qualifying. Why do I call them chiefly British? Just one of my reference points. Continue, mother.
In accordance with the original plan of this work, consistently adhered to in all subsequent editions, the law student confronted in his casebooks with reports from the yearbooks or with extracts from Glanville, Bracton, Littleton, or Coke will find in its dictionary an unusually complete collection of definitions of terms used in Old English, European, and feudal law.
Stop. Where looked up feudal law? Remember, feud, feudal law, feudal, compound word, feud and owl, two words. So feud with the owls. Who the owls? The Moors. What's the opposite or antonym of feudal? Lodi. A lodi, owl lodi. The owls are lodi. Who are the owls? The Moors. So therefore, there's British laws, English laws, British, English laws to usurp the rights of the Moors through exteat and hypophication. And this is the instructions on how to do it. But guess what else this book is?
On how to do what?
On how to usurp, on how to usurp the Moors' E-State. It's also an exorcism, an exercise, an exorcism on how to get the E-State back. How? We start studying international law as it relates to these words. We start studying international law. That is the remedy. Go ahead, mother.
So you're saying that this book is telling us, if we read it correctly, is telling us how to get our estate back?
Yes.
And our, the whole land, the lands of the earth back.
That's correct. But Moors have to learn how to read, which means to comprehend and use forensics, to pull out of that book exactly what we need, to extract the proper words that we need to see the coentail probe, to see the counterintelligence
That's why I said, if we read it right.
Correct. So it's an exorcism. If that book enslaves people mentally, civil or mortals, because they remove them from law, or it can, how it's called, a reversion, an adverse claim. If you not understand how to read law and use it to your advantage. Remembering the story of David and Goliath. David kills or slew Goliath. How? David goes to get three smooth stones from the stream. Three stones. What does that represent? The Trinity. The stones are smooth. What does smooth mean? Those pebbles, those stones are old and aged. And the water that's going past it, the flow, the well, the ancient archaic stones reaching back to your ancient mothers and fathers. David reached back to his ancient mother and father's law and got those smooth stones, because those stones didn't have rough edges. They were smooth. And what he do? He put it inside of that tassel. And he swung it 360 degrees. That's the tassel. 360 degrees. What did he do? He hit Goliath. Boom. Right in the middle of his forehead. What does that represent? Hitting him in the third eye, in pineal gland. Knocking him on what? Conscious. Moors been unconscious. Dorothy was unconscious. David not. Goliath, the giant, unconscious. Boom, hit him with that smooth stone. What do you mean? Hit the giant with that ancient and archaic principles of law. He reached back and brought the ancestors with him. What else happened? After he knocked Goliath unconscious, what did he do? He walked up to Goliath and took Goliath's sword and chopped off Goliath's head with his own sword. What does that mean? You use their laws against them. This is a sword. The pen is mightier than the sword. Your pen and this book are synonymous. You must study law, more specifically, international law, because that is the sword. And how do we knock the Wizard of Oz unconscious? How do we knock the United States of America unconscious? With the ancient and archaic law called common law that doesn't have a hyphen. The positive common law of Moors principles, Moors constitutions. We built civilization around the world. We can reach back. Remember, the colonists didn't write this book. They copyrighted this book. It's copy paste from the Moors. They're using our law to enslave us. Remember, they told us it was illegal for us to read and write. So therefore, what did they do? They knocked us unconscious. They reversed the Goliath story on us. We were Goliath. They hit us in the head. Boom, knocked us unconscious. After that, they chopped our head off with a sword. It's called exteat and hypophication. We got to reverse that. And they remind themselves about blacks law and brown law. They remind themselves of what their obligations are. They're charged D. affairs. Is to keep the Moors from waking up and making a claim to the E-State, which is Article 22 of the Treaty of Peace and Friendship. See, Moors can't make a demand to the estate unless they're conscious, they have a nationality and have a state. We got to use our ancient principles. Let's continue.
I have a question.
Go ahead, mother.
A quick question. And I'm thinking while you're telling the story, I just wonder what was their endgame? Did they think that all Moors were just going to die off? And then they were just going to go in la-la land and no Moors? Because they can't live without Moors.
You must understand that all empires have an age. They start and then they end. A new one starts and then it ends. And a new one starts and then it ends. You know why the colonists want me to hold on to power? They have no Matriarchal Council. As soon as you remove the mothers from the equation of legislation, it becomes a clock of destiny. You won't last long without the mothers. When a patriarchal system comes into play and removes the mothers, and the patriots want to stand up and act like they're kings? When you can't be a king, ain't no such thing as a king without a queen. Any king was a prince first. And before he was a prince, he was in his mother's womb. So how can a king ever rise above a queen? Ain't no such thing. That's why in nature, there's only a queen bee. All males are supposed to be part and parcel of the E-State. The mother protecting her. That's what that provincial state does. It protects the E-State. You're part and parcel of a small section of the E-State. So to answer your question, if the Moors don't put the matriarchs back into legislation in the Matriarchal Council, guess what? Another empire will start and end. If the Moors don't put the mothers back in charge, it won't last long. That's the purpose of why I do what I do. The mothers made me the judge to do what? Interpret the law and enforce the law. What law? The law that the Matriarchal Council created. I'm protecting my mother physically, my mother, as well as the political documents. That's my job. That's my charge. I've been charged D. affairs as an official officer of our state with a title of judge and constable court to protect the mothers. That's my obligation. I signed off on the constitution for a 20-year obligation to protect mothers. Did that answer your question?
Mm-hmm.
All right. Okay, so let's continue to read from the word that says "and feudal law." So we got English, European, and feudal law. They just gave you three in a row, so there's no misunderstandings. English, European, and feudal law. British law. Continue, mother.
The student will also find in this volume on page 1795, a useful table of British regnal years, listing the sovereigns of England for more than 900 years, together with the date of the accession to the throne and the length of reign.
So wait a minute. So now we go back, now we have an understanding. What were we reading in the table of British reginal years? You know what they were talking about? Sovereign Parliament, i.e. legal commonwealth laws that are overseeing North America's, rather than the rest of the British Empire. Their laws from Great Britain, England, London. We're expanding all the way like an empire around the world. They were colonizing the world. Bringing what? Their legislation. So therefore, when you look at this, just to briefly look at it, look at the sovereign, okay? So William I, 1066, year 1066. Wait a minute. Well, let's go down a little closer towards when the United States of America was now signing the treaties with the Sultans. What year is that around? On here, it says George III, October 25th, 1760. So King George was, at that time, dealing with the colonists. He's enforcing parliamentary laws on the colonists. That's why the colonists rebelled. No taxation without representation, because the British were still controlling their laws, even in Morocco, because the colonists were seeking asylum and refuge from the Moors, okay? So I just wanted to go into that quite quickly. Why I keep saying they're chiefly British? It's just one reference point. Even in Black's Law Dictionary, it talks about the British, okay? Let's get back to point. But what's the point? We're talking about the treaty. Well, who wants to sign treaties? George Washington and the colonists. Who are the colonists? They're chiefly British. Why do I say chiefly British? All 13 colonies were descendants of the British. And British law was governing them, so they're chiefly British. What I mean when I say chiefly British? The laws were chiefly British overseeing a variety of nationals who residing in the land. They were governed by chiefly British laws. All right, so Treaty of Peace and Friendship. Let's get on it. Treaty of Peace and Friendship, June 23rd, 1786, in the jurisdiction courts of Morocco. Why is that important? Why did I write that there? We're talking jurisdiction. The United States of America didn't, never had jurisdiction over Moors. They had to go all the way to talk to the Sultan, 3,000 miles away. Talk to the Sultan of Morocco. In order for them to have something that's part and parcel to the Moroccan E-State. We'll find out what that is. So the Treaty of Peace and Friendship, June 23rd, 1786, in the jurisdiction courts of Morocco and ratified by the United States of America on July 18th, 1787. Now, wait a minute. Was there a United States of America in 1787? The answer is no. We're going to learn more about that today. Why are we going over this? Because we're talking constitution. Moors want their rights back. They want their sovereignty. We got to talk constitution. Nobudjou Ali said, let the Europeans teach us government. We're going to read this and learn government. My side note, the colonists that are chiefly British established their first constitution known as the Articles of Confederation on July 17th, 1777. Keep in mind, in 1776, they declared their independence. Independence from who? Great Britain. They didn't want to be British no more. They wanted expatriation status. They de-nationalized themselves, said, we no longer want to be British. So they went under several norms of the year, such as settler, pilgrims, colonists. So they went under several nominee years such as settler, pilgrims, colonists, Quakers, et cetera. And eventually, they created what was called the Continental Congress on behalf of what they call the Articles of the Confederation, which was a constitution they put together, we're talking about that today. Okay, so if I have the mothers read from the word however, that way we get the mothers in here as well.
However, the Confederation did not ratify the Articles of the Confederation, quote unquote, constitution until March first seventeen eighty-one. And subsequently dissolved the Articles of Confederation, quote unquote, constitution on March fourth seventeen eighty-nine. The Constitution for the United States of America was not ratified until June twenty-first seventeen eighty-eight. The govern- governance began on March ninth seventeen eighty-nine.
Okay, so why did I put that on there, we're putting dates and deadlines in place. Why is this important to understand? The colonists are forming government. Moors want their rights, Moors gotta learn how to form government. The colonists formed government, let's see how they did it, okay? So what happened, they proclaimed their independence in seventeen seventy-six. Immediately in seventeen seventy-seven. They started working on their constitution. What does that tell you, Moors? If the colonists were cognizant that they need a constitution, why aren't the Moors cognizant that they need a constitution? We'll talk about that today. However, the Confederation did not ratify the Articles of Confederation Constitution until March seventeen eighty-one. So in seventeen seventy-seven, they start putting together. But they didn't ratify it till seventeen eighty-one, okay? And then subsequently, they dissolved that constitution on March fourth seventeen eighty-nine, so it's from seventeen eighty-one to seventeen eighty-nine. Only eight years they had that constitution. Why is that? Only eight years, we'll learn why. What happened? The Constitution for the United States of America was not ratified until June twenty-first seventeen eighty-eight. And governance began, began in March ninth seventeen eighty-nine, so they ratified a new constitution, United States of America. Another constitution, second one. But they didn't start governance until March ninth seventeen eighty-nine, so let's just stick with the years. They ratified a constitution seventeen eighty-eight, Constitution of the United States of America. Then they didn't start governance till seventeen eighty-nine. Wait a minute. Let's qualify these dates. Why is this important, we're studying constitution? If the mothers can read from qualifying the dates.
The colonists had a constitution of the Con-
Confederation.
Confederation from March first seventeen eighty-one until March fourth seventeen eighty-nine, a total of eight years.
Mm-hmm, continue.
The United States of America was not the name of the colonist constitution on July fifteenth seventeen eighty-six or on July eighteen seventeen eighty-seven. According to their records, the colonists were still operating as the Confederation.
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 Okay, so why is that important to understand? Watch this. What are we just reading? The United States of America was not the name of the colonist constitution on July fifteenth seventeen eighty-six. What happened in seventeen eighty-six? Oh, let's go back up. The Treaty of Peace and Friendship was signed in seventeen eighty-six. So wait a minute. If the Treaty of Peace and Friendship was signed in seventeen eighty-six and fully ratified by the Congress in seventeen eighty-seven. Then how could the United States of America be the party on the Treaty of Peace and Friendship when the United States of America didn't come into existence to win? Seventeen eighty-eight. So they signed the Treaty of Peace and Friendship in seventeen eighty-six. Watch this. If the Confederation signed the Treaty of Peace and Friendship as the United States of America and not the Confederation, then that is what you call fraud, wait a minute, let me explain myself, I don't wanna confuse nobody. The Treaty of Peace and Friendship was signed in seventeen eighty-six and ratified July seventeen eighty-seven. However, the United States of America constitution was enforced seventeen eighty-eight. But they already signed the treaty in seventeen eighty-six. The United States of America didn't exist in seventeen eighty-six. So how could the Treaty of Peace and Friendship be in the name of the United States of America, the United States of America did not exist in seventeen eighty-six or seventeen eighty-seven. So what was the name on the original Treaty of Peace and Friendship? Articles of the Confederation. The Continental Congress that was governing at that time under their treaty, or excuse me, under their constitution that they ratified, watch this. Let's go back up, go back up. Qualify the dates, one more time. The colonies had a constitution of Confederation from March first seventeen eighty-one until March fourth seventeen eighty-nine. A total of eight years. That's the Confederation, Articles of Confederation is named in the constitution. But they signed the Treaty of Peace and Friendship in seventeen eighty-six. But did not dissolve the first constitution to seventeen eighty-eight seventeen eighty-nine. Which tells Moors what? The original party of the Treaty of Peace and Friendship
Was not the United States.
Was not the United States of America. Well, wait a minute. What are we talking about right now, we're talking constitution based upon what the Europeans do it, did because they were creating a government. What am I pointing out right now, they had not one, but two constitutions. Wait a minute, where's the Moors constitution? Moors tell you, we got the Zodiac Constitution. The Zodiac Constitution is not a state provincial constitution. The Zodiac Constitution outlines what? The E state, it talks about the E state, the Zodiac. Zodiac is the woman, the E state, E state, this is the mother flag. But then you must create part and parcel provincial state government, according to what? If you had a convention in nineteen sixty-nine, you must have a state. So wait a minute, let's get back to point. So if the colonists knew they needed a constitution, not one, but two of them, why haven't the Moors created a constitution? You know why? Because we don't read the instructions, Moors have to learn how to read and comprehend, use forensics and stop skimming documents. I'm gonna be, go ahead, mother.
Can I rebuttal to that, I just believe that us as Moors, we didn't know that we needed a law or that we needed a constitution and kind of reading over my definitions here, that I see law was set up for us, particularly the Moors. So if they were already trans- or um conspiring against us of building a law, how do we even know that we needed a law at that time? When the Black Law Dictionary was meant for us, law was meant for this particular group, which was the Moors.
Yes, so what we gonna learn today, mother? You're gonna find out the Moors already had government. Keep in mind, the Moors brought the colonists into government, we brought them into constitution. How did the colonists know about a constitution, they learned it from Moors. Then they turn around, they what, they usurped us, they colonized us and removed us like the movie Dorothy. They bumped our head, they ma- made us unconscious and we forgot about law. And now what happened, what's called a reawakening. A restoration, a reversion, reparation, adverse claim, back to the consciousness of what we taught them. I'll prove that today through George Washington's letter. So you're on point, but we'll get there, alright? Yeah, remember now, we, we built civilization, government was already in place. But the colonists wanted independence by any means necessary. They did not wanna deal with Great Britain as a monarchy, and they didn't wanna deal with the Sultan as a Sultan. They wanted complete independence with no sovereign over them. So we're learning about that today, alright, alright. So let's continue. Back to my point. So what happened if in fact the original contract, the Treaty of Peace and Friendship, the original name is not the United States of America? At the very least, it was Articles of Confederation, or it was Confederation, or it was Continental Congress, it was something other than the United States of America. We're talking about that today, George Washington talked about it, I'll point out to you, George Washington talks about it, okay?
About why they had a United States of America on the treaty?
Yes, alright.
That was my question too.
Absolutely, we're going, we're going to get there, keeping your suspense. We're leaning up to it, you guys are so smart, you're like, you didn't got to the end of the movie trying to work it back. Alright, so watch this, let's, let's cut the suspense, alright? Let's get right into George Washington's letter. Now, keep in mind. You can find George Washington's letter to C. Muhammad on the library at Congress, you just, you just Google it, for people at home, you can Google George Washington's letter to the Sultan of Morocco, and this is what come up on the founders, which is your National Archive. Okay? When you find a National Archive, you scroll down and you'll see the letter. This is the letter George Washington wrote to C. Muhammad, this is on the library at Congress. Okay? However, we're not gonna read directly from this. I created another document because this is a study class to add words to make the reading easier, because Moors have to learn how to read, instead of trying to assume what they're reading, they have to learn how to read, watch this. So therefore, my documents, the Word doc. All the letters you see are read, I edited, I added for the record, study class. Why did I do that? Because if you go back to the original letter. It talks a little in third party, you know, when George Washington was writing it, he wasn't thinking about who was gonna comprehend it. So we gotta go back and comprehend what he was saying, so I started adding text to the document, so it's easier read. However, if people wanna go back and see the reference point, go back and read it and compare the two, and you'll see what I mean, alright? Alright, so George Washington's letter, George Washington to C. Muhammad, December first seventeen eighty-nine. Oh, wait a minute. They had already signed a treaty in seventeen eighty-six seventeen eighty-seven. Two years later, George Washington's writing a letter back to the Sultan. After they had already signed the treaty, gotta have the proper concept, putting in sequential order. C. signed it seventeen eighty-six. The colonists ratified in seventeen eighty-seven. George Washington's writing a letter to the Sultan seventeen eighty-nine, let's continue from there. Alright, so if we can have the mothers start reading.
Okay. To C. Muhammad. Since the date of the letter, which is the constitution of the Articles of Confederation. Congress by the consti- by the-
Continental Congress.
Continental Congress. President, address to your Imperial Majesty, the United States of America have thought proper to change their government and to institute a new one, agreeable to the Constitution for the United States of America. Of which I have the honor of herewith enclosing a copy. The time necessarily employed in this-
Arduous.
Arduous task and the-
Derangement.
Derangement, assoc- assoc-
Efficient.
By so great, though peaceable. A revolution will apologize and account for your majesties not having received those regular advices. And marks of attention. From the United States of America, which the friendship and-
Magnanimity.
Magna- magn-
So say, pronounce it as two words, magna?
Magna?
Nimity.
Nimity.
So magna?
Magna?
Nimity. Alright, so see there's two words, see the word magna?
Yeah.
This is how Moors at home can pronounce it, magna nimity. Magna nimity. Magnanimity.
Magnanimity. Okay. Which the friendship and magnanimity of your conduct towards the constitu- uh, excuse me, the-
Continental Congress.
Continental Congress afforded reason to expect.
Alright, thank you, mother, so let's, let's go over that first paragraph, alright? Well, watch this, we'll break it down, that's what we're here for. So George Washington writing a letter to C. Muhammad, December first seventeen eighty-nine. This is approximately two years after they fully ratified the treaty. He says to C. Muhammad, now keep in mind. George Wash- Washington's writing a letter to someone three thousand miles away. Why is he writing a letter to someone three thousand miles away? It's because he, George Washington is perfectly aware, he's standing in the land of Morocco and the Sultan is the landlord over all the Moors. So he had no choice but try to go straight to the top to negotiate with the delegation of authority who signed that treaty. Okay, so watch this. Since the date of the letter was the late constitution of the Articles of Confederation Congress by the Continental Congress, President stopped. So late Congress, so he's talking about the old constitution of the Confederation that was drafted seventeen eighty-one. They did not dissolve to seventeen eighty-eight. He's talking about the other president, there was other presidents before George Washington. Okay, so George Washington was not the first president. He was just a president of a new constitution that was formed in seventeen eighty-eight seventeen eighty-nine, so he's a first president of a brand new constitution. Because they already had a first constitution with the Articles of Confederation. So they say George Washington was the first president of the United States of America, that is correct. However, he is not the first president of governments, of presidents who were there before him. Because they ratified a constitution in seventeen eighty-one, they needed a president then. That's why they say George Washington's the ninth president of the United States, because back then it was changing presidents every year. Two separate governments, Articles of Confederation, United States of America. George Washington is the first president of the United States of America constitution. Why are we talking about this, Moors must create a constitution, we're talking constitution, go ahead, mother.
So the presidents prior to the United States would have been the presidents of the Confederation.
Yes, that's correct, alright? Why are we talking about this, because we're talking about forming government, look what George Washington did, we're gonna learn something from George Washington today. Let's continue, since from the top, since the date of the letter was the late constitution of the Articles of Confederation Congress by the Continental Congress, President, address to your Imperial Majesty, the United States of America have thought proper to change their government. See, Moors be zipping past this. They're talking government here. They changed the government, how did they change the government? Created another constitution. And to institute a new one, what did they institute? Another constitution, they created what? A state. They start calling themselves the United States. Agreeable to the Constitution for the United States of America, see now they went from Constitution to Congress, Articles of Confederation Constitution. Now to a second constitution, birth of a new nation. now to a second constitution, birth of a new nation, a political document called the United States of America. Of which I have the honor of herewith enclosing a copy, he sent a copy to C. Muhammad, copy what? Constitution, have the Moors put together a constitution? As a high probability, the answer is no. Continue.
So with our presidents prior, like John Hanson was, was considered a Moor, right?
Yes.
So he was a part of a constitution prior the Continental Constitution?
Yes.
Which he kind of, I don't know, was full of this fugal law, right? Fugal law?
Yes, once George Washington created a new constitution, what was he trying to do? Get away from the Moors. Under what they call the Whig of Moor, Whig of Moor, Whig of Moor Party. They were creating a new constitution, but they were serious about their independence away from these Moors and Great Britain.
So that's why the Constitution came up, cuz they were separating from the old ways of the Constitution, which would have had the Moorish people involved.
Yes.
And they wanted to have their own Constitution.
Yes.
Gotcha.
Alright, so now you're understanding why George Washington's doing what he's doing, he's changing, keep in mind, they already signed a treaty. But George Washington's like, the Whig of Moor Party's about to get independence away from those Moors who were a part of government, cuz they brought the Whig of Moor Party in, they brought the colonists in, taught them government. So now George Washington's creating a separate Constitution, why are we doing this? We talking Constitution, how to form a government, we can learn from George Washington what to do. George Washington said, "I'm seeking time of being affiliated with that government," how did he get out of that? He just went and created a Constitution. Gotta understand what I'm saying, Moors. That's the answer to the test. We'll go deeper, he created a Constitution, they created states. They created nationals of their state. But thank you, Mo, for the question, because it just shows the level of your, of the mothers' intelligence in the room, that you're already figuring this thing out. Problem, solution, problem, solution, good for you. Okay, from the top, since the date of the letter was the Constitution of the Articles of Confederation Congress by the Continental Congress, President, address to your Imperial Majesty, wait, Imperial Majesty, this is George Washington writing a letter, what does imperial mean? See, George Washington knew imperial means what? Empire. George Washington knew he was standing in Morocco, cuz he's talking to a Sultan three thousand miles away, cuz he knows he's standing in Morocco as part of the empire. Imperial means empire. Imperial Maj- Imperial Majesty. The United States of America have thought proper to change their government and to institute a new one, wait, Moors. Moors just need to institute a new government? That's the point I'm making to you right now, Moors. Moors want their rights, do what they do, learn from George Washington, institute a new one. The Prophet said, he's, we can learn from the Europeans, guess what we're learning right now? Institute a new government, Moors? Continue. And to institute a new one, agreeable to the Constitution, how do Moors get their rights back? Agree to a Constitution? Create a state? It's not easy. Agreeable to the Constitution, United States of America, which I have the honor of herewith enclosing a copy, the time necessary employed in an arduous task and the derangement occasioned by so great, though peaceful, a revolution will apologize and account for your majesty not having received those regular advices and marks of attention from the United States of America, which the friendship and magnanimity, magnanimity, magna nimity, magnanimity of your conduct towards the Continental Congress afforded reason to expect. What was happening? C. Muhammad was sending letters over to the Continental Congress, they wasn't responding back, he's like, "Hey man." Sultan said, "Why ain't y'all listening to my letters? I just signed a treaty with you seventeen eighty-six, seventeen eighty-seven." Now in seventeen eighty-eight, I'm sending you letters, y'all ain't answering, why? They were talking about change, the colonists were in fighting.
They were regaling.
And with the Moor, they're fighting with the Moors. So they said, "You know what?" George Washington said, "We gonna create a new Constitution." We don't, we want independence from Moors, and we want independence from monarchies and Great Britain. So they instituted a new one, what do Moors have to do? Create a new one, what did Ampac do? Created a new government through a Constitution, they created a state, now we're Moorish nationals. What did George Washington do? He created a new Constitution, created a new state, that became United States of America, just like that, with what? A pen? That's the truth. Let's continue. We haven't even got past the first paragraph, we spent thirty minutes on it. Why is that? Because it's important to understand what the Moors have failed to do. What have we failed to do? Read. This is an instruction on how you create a government. Moors haven't been creating government, Moors have been self-appointed. You can't be self-appointed nothing. You have to have a government. That's what George Washington's telling C. Muhammad, "Look man, we, we created a new government." Is the Moors telling the United States of America they have a government? Yeah, some Moors have been saying that, but guess what? They're self-appointed. Can't be self-appointed nothing unless you have a Constitution. This Constitution creates the status. The status creates the state. Okay, Mo, so we can read next paragraph, please?
We greatly regret that the hostile disposition of those regencies-
Wait, come on, should we start from the United States of America?
At the top.
At the top.
Oh.
Okay, let's start from the top.
Okay, the United States of America having unanimously appointed me to the supreme executive authority of, in the, in this nation, your majesty's letter of the seventeenth August seventeen eighty-eight, which by reason of the dissolution of the late government remained unanswered, has been delivered to me. I have also received the letters which your Imperial Majesty has been so kind as to write in favor of the United States of America to the Bashaws of Tunis and Tripoli, and I present to you these sincere acknowledgements and thanks for the United States of America for the important mark of your friendship for the Continental Congress.
Okay, so let's break down this article, what's happening? Remember early on, I described the fact there was no United States of America at the time the treaty was signed. Now George Washington's created a brand-new Constitution with a new name on it. What did he want the Sultan to do? He wanted him to create what you call an amendment, an amend-ment, amendment of the treaty and add the United States of America. So therefore, George Washington's thanking C. Muhammad, "Hey man, I appreciate you allowing us to change our name to be affiliated with the treaty." But see, why are we being taught this? About the fact that the original subscribers to the treaty was not the United States of America. They became part and parcel after the fact. And C. Muhammad allowed them to do it, that's why he's thanking C. Muhammad. But wait a minute, what's my point? Moors have to create a government. We are the Moroccan government. That the colonists have to come to the Moroccan government to get permission for everything they do. But the only way the, the colonists ever gonna talk to the Moroccan government is that the Moors, Moroccan government, has a government, a state. Then the United States of America's then obligated to deal with disputes between these two states, the United States got a problem with Moors, you gotta come to a Moor state to talk about it. The United States wanna do something in our juris- in our jurisdiction, the United States wants to do it, they gotta come to Moors to do it. But the Moors haven't had a state. So the United States of America's been running amok in Morocco, why? Because the Moors failed to simply just create a state. That's the answer to the test, Constitution creates the state. The state creates your rights as Moorish nationals. Without a state, you're stateless, and you can't enforce nothing. You cannot be self-appointed, that's not a state, that's de facto. You don't wanna be de facto, Moors, talking about yourself appointed, nothing, you gotta now ratify a Constitution that creates the state through elected officials. These are governments talking. George Washington ain't talking as he's self-appointed. He's talking government through a Constitution, Moors gotta learn this. Let's go on to the next paragraph, Mo.
We greatly regret that the hostile dis- disposition of these regencies, i.e. Moorish jurisdiction and government towards the United States of America, colonists who have never injured Moors is not to be removed on terms in our power to comply with. Within our territories, there are no mines either of gold or silver, and this young nation just receiving, recovering from the waste and dissolution, desolation of a long war, have not as yet had time to acquire riches by agriculture and commerce. But our soil is bountiful and our people industrious, and we have reason to flatter ourselves that we shall gradually become useful to our friends.
Thank you, Mo. Now wait a minute, go ahead, Mo.
So just for clarification, okay, we had a government, we had an estate, we had a Constitution. What happened to our government when these colonists, these imposters came over here and just stole it from us? What happened to the original government of the Moors?
We got colonized, it was called use of force. Keep in mind, remember back in our previous classes, we've talked about the enemy alien act of seventeen ninety-eight.
But this is after the fact, this seventeen ninety-eight.
Yes, gotta put in proper sequential order. Seventeen ninety-eight, okay? But before seventeen ninety-eight, what happened? The treaty was signed in seventeen eighty-six. Fully ratified seventeen eighty-seven. George Washington comes out in seventeen eighty-nine, says, "No, I'm changing you." So by seventeen ninety-eight, they're already saying, "We ain't working with these Moors no more." Seventeen eighty-nine is their year the Whig of Moor Party's saying, "We ain't dealing with Moors no more," seventeen eighty-nine. So by seventeen ninety-eight, nine years later, they had already classified Moors as being aliens and subjects. Pulled them into the territory jurisdiction of the United States of America and went to war. What else happened in seventeen ninety-eight? Same year, the United States of America no longer wanted to keep the treaty with France. They got rid of France, cuz France was the consul, the protectorate of both Moors and the United States of America, being the referee on behalf of these two separate nations. So they kicked France to the curb, and they kicked the Moors to the curb, which means they kicked the Sultan to the curb too. Cuz anything you do to the Sultan's decrees of saying France is the consul court and that the Moors' government shall be enforced, soon as the colonists start to do anything to abridge anything that's repugnant to those treaties, immediately the colonies became rogue, seventeen eighty-nine. They start to usurp us, immediately called us the aliens, imagine that. After we gave them refuge and asylum in our land and taught them government on how to get what? Autonomous status away from Great Britain. We taught them how to get autonomy from Great Britain, so they can have their independence, that's what they wanted. That's why George Washington's talking right here, talking about gold and silver, why is he talking about gold and silver? He owed rent to the Sultan and the Moors. Yeah, remember now, Britain, the colonists, didn't wanna deal with Great Britain. No taxation without representation. See, that worked for them, why did it work? They got the Moors, Spain and France to come and protect the United States of America. When they signed the treaty seventeen seventy-eight, France and Spain came and helped the United States colonists to defeat the British. This is why France ain't never forgot, forgot about the fact, the United States of America wouldn't be the United States of America if it weren't for the Moors, Spain and France protecting the colonists who are chiefly British. Cuz they wanted independence, and France was like, "That's what's up? It ain't enemy of Britain. It's a friend of mine." And then what did, what did George Washington and the founding fathers do? They usurped, they breached, they breached the contracts of the treaties in seventeen ninety-eight, they cut off France, and they cut off the Moors, and kept moving forward, they ain't looked back since. That's why France keeps coming back as an antagonist, along with the Moroccan Sultans, to deal with the colonists. That's why I keep showing y'all timelines of what France keeps doing to try to undermine the colonists, cuz France ain't never forgot, and neither did the Sultans. Watch this. Give you another timeline. Seventeen ninety-eight, enemy alien act, seventeen ninety-eight, which is close to eighteen hundred, right? Do that math? What happened in eighteen oh four, eighteen oh five? There's a song that came out by the Marines. Watch this, here's what the Marines sing. "From the halls of Montezuma to the shores of Tripoli, we fight our country's battles in the air, on the land and sea." Let's go back to the beginning, from the halls of Montezuma, west Montezuma, Yucatan, west Yucatan. Mexico, Morocco, all that. Morocco, that's marketing empire. Where's the shores of Tripoli? Morocco, North Africa. So in eighteen oh four, eighteen oh five, the United States of America, because the Sultan was upset with the colonists, they said, "You know what Sultan? Shut the hell up, we gonna go to war with you. We know how to deal with Sultans and monarchs," keep in mind, I colonies signed a treaty seventeen eighty-six, eighty-seven. They already went to war with the Sultan by eighteen oh five. Totally, totally rogue, breaching the contracts. They conquered us, Moors. The Marines sing about it, they conquered Boon from the halls of Montezuma, Moors, to the shores of Tripoli, Moors, they conquered the Moors. After they conquered us, they got rid of, they made us get out of the seats of governments. And they took over on buildings. The limestone buildings you'll see all over the world, Moors built those, not the colonists. You look on pictures, they got a mule outside of a masonry building. Ain't do nothing, ain't build no buildings. Y'all got a damn mule, that's, that's as far as y'all technology goes, a mule? We build pyramids, y'all got a mule, and wanna put your placid, a placard on our buildings and say, "We built this in eighteen sixty." You must always understand though, Moors. Moors helped the colonists. Your sellout Moors, your coin tell pro Moors, your conversal Moors, helped the colonists, watch this, I'll say it again. The colonists cannot win a war without a Moor, that's the truth. So don't blame us just on colonists, they had help. If you watch any so-called Indian movie, you always see some Indians dressed in some damn fatigue of a military guy. That's a sellout. He dressed in army fatigue and with a damn mohawk. Moors are no different, we did the same damn thing, we were getting paid to help the, the militia on behalf of the colonists. Why? That was your sons, Moors. That was your sons, you gotta create legislation to keep them from being able to do that ever again. That's the truth, let's get back to the point. We greatly regret the hostile disposition- We greatly regret the hostile disposition of those regencies, i.e. Moors jurisdiction and government. Moors already had governments. The colonies were fighting with the Moors and fighting with the British towards the United States of America. So the Moors were fighting the United States of America. Some Moors were with the United States of America and some Moors were fighting against the United States of America. That's why George Washington pointing it out. Hostilities. Who have never injured Moors, trying to say the United States of America wasn't trying to injure Moors. He ain't telling the truth. But he's trying to tell C. Muhammad, "Man, I'm maintaining that treaty, man." And that treaty is saying, "We supposed to be at peace. So I don't want you tripping saying we arguing with the Moors because I need you to accept this new constitution that says United States of America in good faith." So watch this. Why do I have in bold is not to be removed. Who is not to be removed? Listen, Moors. George Washington and the colonists were not supposed to move, remove Moors from government. Much less from the territories, the regencies, the dominion from which they live. Trail of Tears. They removed us from the land, our regencies, and they removed us from government. They removed us from government first. Moors gotta understand this. Look, they're reading. This is a document about government. The colonists, George Washington was supposed to remove Moors from government, not that they created a new constitution of the United States of America, but the Whigamore Party said, "We done with these Moors." So when you hear Taj Sri Bay always talking about Stanley Yellow Brick Road, he's talking about, "Keep studying your ancient and archaic laws of your mothers and fathers." Study international law. Study what the Moors had government in place already. That's why Taj keeps saying, "Enforce the constitution." Because he knows that constitution that George Washington adopted came from constitutions that the Moors had already wrote. The founding fathers didn't found nothing. Or should I say invent anything? They found it already. It's called copy paste.
Right.
Then they put what? Patents on everything.
Like it was theirs.
Yeah. They put patents on everything as if they created. They don't create governments. We brought them into government. That's why they say they adopted the constitution. If you adopt something, that means it wasn't yours. You brought it in from somebody else's family. What family did they adopt the constitution from? The Moors already had government. We got colonized through use of force. Trail of Tears. They removed us from the seats of government and then got us the hell out of the territory. And those Moors who stayed either had to now submit or just constantly be at war.
Through their oaths and rituals.
Yes. So what's happening? Once we create the state, we got Moors nationals, we teach them the history. The women give birth to the child. Our new children will come out now learning real law and not indoctrination anymore. Based upon Rockefeller and Frederick T. Gates of nineteen oh two, those days are over.
His mom.
His mom. It's his mom. I self-law and master. We have to now take it, we have to take our own affairs into our own hands and stop waiting on the colonists to do something full up. We don't come in there for nothing. They wanna do their thing, fine. They got jurisdiction of what? Their citizens. But they don't have jurisdiction over Moors nationals. Keep in mind, we're cohabitating. C. Muhammad signed a cohabitation treaty. We have no choice but to cohabitate. But guess what? That's why Moors must have their signs and symbols according to Article Four of the Treaty of Peace and Friendship, signs and symbols to show the United States of America that we're Moors. Separate jurisdiction, separate nation, cohabiting. But at the same time, the United States of America is supposed to have their signs and symbols. They're supposed to have their banner to let us know that they're the colonists. But obviously, we can look at their primavera and tell that they're colonists as well, most times. We look at it and call them white people, although they ain't white people. So some signs and symbols aren't what they are. You can just look at a person and say, "Nah." Right? That's the truth. Okay, let's get back there. Got a long way to go. We greatly regret the hostile disposition of those regencies, i.e. Moors jurisdictions and government towards the United States of America colonists who have never injured Moors is not to be removed. Removed from what? Their government seats and their land, their regencies. On terms of our power to comply with. George Washington had to comply to what? The treaty. And his promise he's giving C. Muhammad not to create impediments for Moors. Within our territories, there are no mines either of gold or silver in this young nation just recovering from the waste of dissolution, desolation of a long war. Stop. Wait a minute. Why is he talking about gold and silver? Now you understand why the United States of America started moving westbound. They were looking for gold and silver to pay who? C. Muhammad. But eighteen oh five, they said, "We done with that, can you see?" Eh, we just gonna keep this gold and silver for ourselves. So we gonna go to war, usurp you, colonize you and give you nothing. We'll keep everything. That's the truth. But they talking about gold and silver. Why? Because the colonists didn't have their own gold and silver because they wanted to be affiliated to Great Britain no more. So Great Britain's like, "Y'all can't use our gold and silver coins as minted, as British coin." You don't wanna be British no more? Fire your own damn minted coins. So the colonists is on the east coast, thirteen colonies. They ain't got no gold and silver. They's got their own mint on it based upon them being the United States of America. So C. Muhammad tells them, "Look, just use Moors coins for now, that's fine." In the Treaty of Peace and Friendship, I think it's Article sixteen, it's talking about, he tells the colonists, "Use Mexican coin, which is Moors coins." But guess what? They didn't, the colonists didn't have no coins. Because there wasn't no mine. They digging and pining for gold, couldn't find none on the east coast. Okay, let's continue. Next article, the encouragement.
The encouragement which your majesty has been pleased generously to give to our commerce with your dominions, i.e. land and Morocco jurisdiction. The punctuality with which you have caused the treaty with us to be observed and the just and generous measures taken in the case of Captain Proctor made a deep impression on the United States of America and confirmed that respect for and attachment to your imperial majesty.
Wait a minute. Look what George Washington's saying to C. Muhammad. The encouragement which your majesty has been pleased generously to give to our commerce with your dominions. George Washington admitting on the record, and he's standing in Morocco. Dominion's of what? Morocco. He's talking to a Sultan three thousand miles away, talking about dominion. Who's dominion? It says right there, your dominion. Who's your? Sultan of Morocco, could you stand in Morocco? Wait a minute. So if George Washington knew this, all your previous presidents knew this. Which means ever since the United States of America, not be confused with the United States or be confused with the original colonists of Jamestown going back all the way to sixteen twenty, they've always known they've been standing in Morocco. The only people that don't know we standing in Morocco is people who think people are crayons.
Jamestown, you bringing up like the wild, wild west, right?
Yeah, Jamestown, you know, your original colony before they created the thirteen colonies. They're all chiefly British. They all come from Great Britain and set up colonies. And that's why they call them the colonists. So George Washington said on the record, "I know this is Morocco. That's known." But keep in mind, after seventeen eighty-nine and then seventeen ninety-eight, enemy aliens act. They said, "We done with these Moors. We about to hit them on the head like Dorothy. About to hit them in the head like Goliath, make them unconscious." Then they went to war with the Sultan eighteen oh five, seventeen ninety-eight, enemy aliens act, eighteen oh five, they go to war. They didn't wanna pay the rent. So let's look at this word right here. Attachment to your imperial majesty. What does that mean? Attachment to, attachment to your imperial majesty. What does that mean?
Attachment to their land.
Yes. So the United States of America constitution and its nationals are an attachment to Moors and to Morocco, the empire. Without their constitution, they're not part and parcel. So their banner, the thirteen stars and stripes made them part and parcel to the East State. So they created a provincial government. The thirteen stars and stripes was their original flag based upon their sovereignty that C. Muhammad allowed them to have. Is part and parcel to the Moroccan flag. They're an attachment to the Moroccan flag. They created a state flag for their nationals. But wait a minute. Where's the Moors state flag? This is the E state flag. Everybody is part and parcel of this flag. Where's the Moors state flag? Where's the constitution? They wanna enforce the treaty? They need a state. So right there, let me underscore, what are we learning? We're learning government. Moors must be an attachment to the imperial majesty. But who's the imperial majesty in northwest of Mexico? Moors creating their own governments. We're gonna be part and parcel to the E state flag. With our own governments in northwest of Mexico, i.e. also known as North America. We become the new governments of northwest of Mexico and bring our Moors subjects back into Moors national status. So we can be part and parcel to the East State. Saying, when George Washington says he found an attachment to the imperial majesty. What does imperial majesty mean? The empire. Let's continue.
It gives me, it gives me pleasure to have this opportunity of assuring your majesty that while I remain at the head of this nation, I shall not cease to promote every measure that may conduce to the friendship and harmony which so happily subsists between your Sharifian and Moors empire and the citizens of the United States of America. And shall esteem myself happy in every occasion of convincing your majesty of the high sense, quote unquote, which in common with the whole nation, I entertain of the magnanimity, wisdom and benevolence of your majesty.
Stop. Thank you, mother. Watch this. Let's go back through it real quick. It's real simple. So George Washington said, "It gives me pleasure to have this opportunity of assuring your majesty that while I remain at the head of this nation," what nation? The United States of America, even though he's Morocco. Wait, we're learning government right now, Moors. So what are you saying? Once he created the constitution, they created the state, immediately made them a nation and nationals. They were no longer subjects or proteges of the previous government. The mothers must understand legislation can make you turn right into a nation with a pen just by creating the constitution that creates the state. It's that simple. But the mothers have to use their intellect and your charm to bring your sons back into the constitutional fold of government. If they don't, they are considered stateless people. The United States of America saying, "Well, we checked all these boxes." Ask C. Muhammad. And the Moors right now saying, "Well, we wanna enforce the United States to be bound to the treaties." Well, wait a minute, Moors. You gotta read international law. Nineteen sixty-nine, the end of convention says you must have a state until you have a state. You're stateless people.
You have great analogies and I'm sorry to get off the topic, but in Deuteronomy, it talks about how we will become the till of the nation and the imposters will come over and become the head.
Yes. What's the endgame? That eventually all Moors around the world come back to this E state flag around the world. That's called Europe, China, India, you name it. The copper-colored people will come back home to the E state. And we'll be back in rulership, but we'll never have rulership if the mothers are controlling legislation. That's the point. That's the endgame. All the nations must come together, all the states of Moors states all around the world. That's the endgame. Did that answer your question, mother?
Yes, yeah, yeah.
Let's go to the last paragraph.
In, in the course of approaching winter, the national legislature, which is called by the former name of Congress, i.e. continental Congress, will assemble and I shall take care that nothing be omitted that may be necessary to cause the correspondence between our countries to be maintained and conducted in a manner agreeable to your majesty and satisfactory to all the parties concerned in it.
All right. Thank you, mother. Now watch this. What is George Washington admitting here? In the course of approaching winter, the national legislator, we're talking government. Where's the Moors national legislator? So high probability, we don't have one. We need to create a national legislator. For what? Each of the states. Bring the states together and have a national legislator on behalf of the union Moors states. We'll get there. Continuing. Will assemble. So the Moors have to bring together what's called a caucus. Once we have our states, several states, we all lock arms. Put together the caucus and brings them all together to create a national legislator. But what is, more importantly, what is George Washington promising here? He says what? "I shall take care that nothing be omitted that that may be necessary to cause the correspondence between our countries." Omitted from what? Constitution to protect the Moors. That's Article six of the Constitution for the United States of America, Article six supremacy clause treaty. He's telling C. Muhammad to treat the supreme law of the land regardless of what the United States of America puts in their constitution. Treat the supreme law of the land. Which means it goes back to the sovereign. Who's the sovereign? Moors. What else did he say? Between our countries. So what did he say? Between our countries, two separate nations. Two separate nations. What the colonists do, they drag the Moors into the jurisdiction of the United States of America through hypoification in its cheek and remove the country, the nation of Moors. Make them extinct on paper. Moors are still here. Think they're negro, black and colored. Think they're negro, black and colored. They're Moors. But once the Moors put their state together, now we back to two separate countries, two separate nations, the Moors will enforce constant court. Moors will enforce the sovereign powers through their state. The state is the sovereign and protects your rights. And last but not least, what does George Washington say? In a manner that's agreeable to your majesty. Who's your majesty? The empire. The colonists are obligated to the empire Morocco, not to the Sultan. Not to the Sultan, the empire, the dominion, the land. So the colonists living here, what they call North America, are obligated, agreeable, through what? Treaty. To be part and parcel and maintain their obligations. Uh, Moors have a constant court and their original jurisdiction is being the emoldeum. Sovereigns of the land through their states, not self-appointed officials, state officials. That's what we're learning here from George Washington. Moors have to understand, George Washington's talking about government, how do you, how do you put together a government? Constitution. That creates the state, United States. Where's the Moors state? That's the answer to the test. Okay. So what gives Moors permission to put together their government? That's the question, what, well, how can Moors put together a constitution? That's the question, maybe some Moors might ask. How can Moors just arbitrarily put together a constitution and create a government? It was already said in the treaty of eighteen eighty Madrid, protections in Morocco, let's go to it. Article fifteen. Treaties is a supreme law of land. So this Article fifteen is a supreme law of land. Watch this. Right protections in Morocco, we're standing in Morocco, so we're protected in Morocco, only if you have a state. Why do we have to have a state? Cause that's what the international law says nineteen sixty-nine, the United Convention. Articles one and two tell you specifically. Article fifteen, any subject of Morocco, so right now, we're in what's called a what? Subject status. Not impact Moors, impact Moors are Moors nationals. But all the other Moors who don't have a state, they're in what? Subjects of Morocco. The ICJ made it clear. All subjects of Morocco are citizens of the United States. All proteges of Morocco are citizens of the United States, cause you come under the protections of the United States until you create a state. So right here, Article fifteen, if you're still a subject, watch what you can do. Any subject of Morocco who has been naturalized in a foreign country, the United States of America. And who shall return to Morocco, you return to Morocco, how? Dorothy. You've become competent, come back to a Moroccan government, watch this. Shall after having remained for a length of time equal to that which shall have been readily necessary for him to obtain such naturalization, in the United States of America jurisdiction, choose between entire submission to the laws of the empire, not legal, laws of the empire, what empire? North America, the empire. And the obligation to quit Morocco. Moors subjects have an obligation to quit Morocco, the government. You can come to Morocco and check a box that says, I wanna be a Moors national, check the box. I wanna remain being a subject and a protege of a protected, naturalized status. Either way, you gotta check the box. You can't be out there just saying, I'm a citizen of the United States. You have an obligation to come back to a Moroccan government and say you wanna be a United States of America citizen. You gotta come back to a Moroccan government and say, I wanna remain being if so ju, if so juror, Moors subject. You gotta come back to a Moroccan government and say, I wanna remain being a protege of the United States of America. And Moors nationals have to come back and say, I just wanna stay over here. Moors national of the state. Continuing. So choose between entire submissions to the laws of the empire and the obligation to quit Morocco, obligation to quit Morocco, unless it shall be proved that his naturalization in a foreign country was obtained with the consent of the government of Morocco. So what does that mean? Moors can establish their own governments and consent to their own governments, cause we're part and parcel to our own land. Can't nobody tell us what to do with our own land. Once you come back into consciousness that you need a state. The state is what protects your rights to have a government. Moors need government, saying it right here, government. Let's finish up, foreign naturalization heretofore acquired by subjects of Morocco according to the rules established by the laws of each country shall be continued to them regards as regards all its effects without any restrictions. Where are the rules established? Moors can establish rules and come back to their country of Morocco because they no longer wanna be naturalized. If so juror, Moors subjects are still naturalized citizens of the United States. Proteges, Moors proteges are still citizens of the United States. Only Moors nationals can say they can enforce the treaties. So where do we get our permission? ICJ has spoken, Article fifteen. Until then, we're still stateless people. So as I wrap up, what do we need to know, Moors? George Washington created a government with a constitution that created the states. That's the answer to the test, Moors. Moors need a state. Without a state, we're stateless people. That's the truth. Islam.